Good evening. It's seven o'clock. It's the Eastline Planning Commission meeting. It's Tuesday, July 9th. We have two commissioners who are unable to attend today, so we have two alternates sitting. From right to left, do you want to introduce yourselves?
Samuel Sims.
Brian Bonback.
Tim Leducer.
Rich Gordon.
Nick Menepace.
Tom Finney.
Thank you. Now time for the pledge of allegiance.
I am certified in the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now it's time to call for any additions to the agenda. Is there any, are there any additions? Anybody else? No, okay. Now is the time for public delegations. Public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters, items, referrals, or applications subject to decision by the commission. A public hearing or litigation may not be discussed. During delegations, the members of the commission will not directly answer questions or make comment. We do have a public hearing scheduled for later this meeting on the resubdivision application, so we'll open that up in a little while. Any other, any calls? Thank you. Next section is reports, communications. I don't think we have any.
I have to report.
Okay.
I did receive correspondence from the GNP regarding the application pesticide use of like that. I see that it corresponds to an applicator that they're going to be applying that on July 19.
Thank you. Next, zoning representative. Has anyone?
I'm filling in for Cindy. So, yeah, the meeting had several points of interest. One I'm just going to discuss briefly just because I just thought it's a good point of information. The meeting started off with a member of the public discussing how the zoning commissioner chair obtained the post after being voted out in the last election. And she went on to accuse four members of the board of deception. And she had done this similarly before previous meetings. The point I want to make is that it got to the point where the zoning board members during the new business section of the meeting introduced a motion to move the public delegations till the end of the meeting. This actually passed. And it passed four to two with the two dissenters saying, hey, you know, the public deserves a chance to speak. And now we're waiting for them till after the meeting's over. It could be 10:30 at night that these people are going to have to speak. Anyways, I just thought it was interesting to see that they moved the call for public delegations to the end of the zoning meeting. And then they went on to discuss the, they had a public hearing on this 25-unit affordable housing proposed at 91 Boston Post Road. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it's like behind Triton going towards Waterford. There's a road there. It used to be a farm. They had previously denied the application. They came back and represented. There's a lot of discussion on the proposed development is up the hill from Latimer Brook. So they were concerned with runoff to Latimer Brook. And they were also concerned with getting access to that driveway with all the traffic, especially like on a Sunday night. You know, it'd be almost impossible to get in and out of there with all the traffic. Anyways, the board denied that application for a second time. Then they discussed on 13 Point Road, there's a house down there that they, the applicants wanted demolish and put up a new structure. They approved that. And they discussed the Spice Club renewing their outdoor dining permit, which they approved that. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
I had a question actually, because I, it's just something for the, I was just curious about this because I didn't think that was allowed. Like, in order to, like, say we wanted to make a change, because I know, Brian, you had a proposal at one point to potentially change the bylaws. I know we didn't really go anywhere. Do we, don't we have, I was under the impression that we would have to essentially make that as, that's not something we could just do in this meeting, right? If we wanted to change our bylaws, we could not simply just say, okay, we're going to change the bylaw right now.
Well, it would have to be a motion and have to be approved.
Yeah. But I would, I'm sorry. I guess that's where I was, I was under the impression that you'd have to call that as a specific item agenda for a following meeting, that it wasn't something you could do in that meeting. Or is that, maybe I've just misunderstood.
You can get the items added to the agenda with the majority voting commission and take it up as an item.
Okay.
It's an administrative function of the given motion.
Okay. All right. So I guess that, I probably was thinking of the administrative part of it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Ex-CEO from the Board of Selectment Office, Don McKenzie, do you have anything to report?
Good evening. A few things from our meeting Wednesday night, which I thought was pretty interesting. People involved. Number one, transfer station fees. In the fall, we pick up leaves from people's yards. The town does. Well, most of the people, a lot of the people have hired services to do this. And part of that hired services, they are charged a fee when they go to the landfill to drop the leaves off. And the fees are going up. And they're screaming that some people now are going to stop the service maybe. It's going to be costly, or maybe they have to absorb it. There are residents, there are businesses. And so we didn't table it, but we said, we're going to develop a way to try to make it work. The issue is the big roll-offs. First in London has stopped taking leaves. And the roll-offs, the big guys who just load up these huge tons of, it takes three years for those leaves to go away. And so, anyway, we're going to work out a way to hopefully help our contractors still be able to deliver the leaves and maybe upcharge the guys with the roll-offs and go that route. They're doing it really heavy duty commercially, like almost abusing the system. And New London, not sure if we're going to say stop doing that. They got to go somewhere, but put a fee into that. So that's where we are. But we are going to try to help our local contractors with that. Since the town's still going to offer it for free by putting on the side of the road, they could be doing other things if we haven't taken, taken by our contractors, the guys who are doing it for people's and their houses. Second thing I thought was quite promising. Looks like it's going to be approved that a sidewalk will be put in on East Patagonia, on the Westerly side, going from 156 all the way to 161. Right now, there doesn't look like there'll be any eminent domain, but there'll be permission from about five or six residences for grading. Hopefully, that won't make much restriction. I'm sure it'll be done professionally. The state's going to help foot this. Quite a bit of progress. I don't know if a sidewalk can be a biking bathroom. I don't think so. There's not enough room. But the sidewalk is going to be huge if that goes through. That's about it. It's this Saturday. I'm doing a presentation on the ribbon cutting for the new pickleball court at Brightbrook. I said, I got to go figure out what I know what I'm talking about. I mean, I know the game, but I got to go see this facility because we're trying to put one in Black Point, too. And although it's expensive, it's amazing. No, nothing was untouched as far as the fencing. The fencing for the wind and the dust that blows across the court, the layers that were taken, it's sort of a quarter million dollar project. And it's done. People are using it. When I went there to look at it, three of the four courts were being used, and this is 10 o'clock in the morning. Very, very nice, very professional. And it is the most popular growing sport in America right now for all age groups, mostly seniors. That's about it right now. A couple other items are titled, were tabled, and discussion. We've got a good board working well together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, planning director Gary Gaisel. Do you have any updates?
Can I report? I did talk with the Southeastern Connecticut Council Department. I had a meeting with them. They're working on the east coast grid that's basically from Blue Haven to the Riverdale section. So for a bike path. So they're asking us for some assistance and what we would like to see. Our successful grant application to develop this that might result in things like bike racks. Really, it falls under the community connectivity community program. And we have, so we're going to work on it. Improving APA transition plan and working on that. It's been part of it. So that's something to look forward to. They're also working on getting funding in place for a group of 56, where we're studying. I guess that all of 161. Again, these studies will help support infrastructure costs for sidewalks and bike paths in the future. And I'm really trying to do more funding. And I did have another meeting again with the Southeastern Connecticut Council Department today. I'm finding resilience, see brand potential. They're looking to apply for the end plant, which I was going to indicate. How this impacts us is primarily the community that had a need to fund. So that might, I did indicate that we might need any generators, shelter, regional shelter, things of that nature. Big project, so they're going to put all this together. So that might be something that's all that we're across. I also report that two interns that are on board, Sujesh Kurval and Miles Hinkley. So far, so good. I just observed. Questions for us? Any help? Some helpful, fun information. So that's all I have for now.
Thank you. So committee reports, I believe we have any. Chairperson report, I don't really have any updates. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Were there any, for the meeting minutes for June 11th, 2024, the regular meeting, was any discussion?
Oh, sorry. I was just trying to make sure that we had our adjournments correct this time again. I don't think it's in here.
Okay. I can entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? No.
Tim.
Oh, Sam. You abstained?
No, no. I approved.
Okay.
The first one, I approve.
Uh, Tim.
Make the motion. Yeah. Tim will approve that. Brian's second.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing based on an application of Andia and Palom Licolari. Sorry if I mispronounced the name. It's for a two-lot resubdivision of approximately 1,000, 1.931 acres of land zoned RU40 and request for a waiver from Section 423A to J of the Eastline subdivision regulations on property located at 123 Scott Road in Eastline. I can, anybody from, who wants to speak?
The applicant is here.
Okay.
So we have Exhibit A, which is the application of Andia and Palom Licolari for a two-lot resubdivision of approximately 1.93 acres of land zoned RU40 and property located at 123 Scott Road. The Eastline assessor's map number 35.0. A portion of lot 23-4, Niana, Connecticut. Exhibit B, a resubdivision plans entitled "Resubdivision Map Prepared for Andia Licolari and Palom Licolari, Scott Road, Eastline, Connecticut." List of adjacent landowners within 500 feet is Exhibit C. Exhibit D is the Butters map. Exhibit E, list of waiver requests. Exhibit F is the sanitary and water supply report. Exhibit G is the water department Ben Norris review. Exhibit H, town engineer's Alex Close review. Exhibit I, review from the zoning official Bill Mulholland. Exhibit J is the review from Eric Quinn, fire marshal. Exhibit K is the public hearing notice sent to the applicant via certified mail. Exhibit L is the public hearing notice that was published in the day newspaper on June 27th and July 2nd, 2024. Exhibit M, certified mail receipts to 123 Scott Road of Butters, received July 1st, 2024. Exhibit N is a public hearing for a subdivision sign, post, proof of posting. And Exhibit O is the Leged Light Health District, Danielle Holmes, application review. That's all I have for the items for the record.
Thank you. Does anybody want to speak for the applicant?
Is that your application? Sorry. Can you come to the podium and introduce yourself?
I'm Bertilicolari. I'm the son of Andia and Palom. And our application is basically just to divide the existing lot into two one-acre lots for development.
So I think it's a relatively straightforward request to resubdivision of existing lot. Just saw something before, a few months prior, essentially from the items in the record. Last item we were waiting on was the exclamation of view due to today indicating that lots are suitable for subsurface, so just both. Town engineer in case of the right-of-way permit for the two driveway cuts. And previous application, essentially the request of waivers A to J, the previous application addressed all of those items. So the question, there is, you want to incorporate previous application into this application? Item, I don't know if it's necessary to do that. I think what would be important to do is reference the fact that these items were addressed in the previous application and therefore are inherently addressed in this application. Short of incorporating all those record items from the previous application. So I think it should reference the noting in the record that that work has been done, archaeological survey, all of this review.
What, the previous application, what happened to it?
It got approved. They were, there's three lots to the south of this.
Okay. So we're just subdividing another one?
The last lot.
Do you know what date that was on by any chance? Previous application? I'd just like to have a look.
It wasn't too long ago, right? I recall. I think I remember.
I think that's a different project. It's a different area. Not this one, right? This is just the one that's off in Pennsylvania in January. Okay. I have this, yes.
Could you just put your question in?
Yes. U M B E R T I.
What address?
67 Arbor Crossing.
Previous application subdivision was the Hathaway Farm Three Lottery subdivision dated September 7th, 2023.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just wondering why we're, you know, short cutting here. But if you say these are all addressed previously, then that answers my question. I think it should be noted so that, you know.
Yeah, I, one of the questions I had in reviewing this myself was why the previous applicant didn't split the lot when they were making their application. Short of it might have suddenly increased their application fee to the plot. I don't know if they didn't want to pay for test holes out there or didn't want to pay for additional plot. I think tax reasons, a number of reasons. I'm not, it's perplexing a little bit. But nonetheless, in my review, in talking with the applicant prior to their purchase, they inquired whether or not they subdivided based on the land and what they were reviewing, if they could. So I was wondering why the previous applicant didn't suit other than maybe they thought it was a marketing tool to whoever buys this could charge a little more for the overall lot. Maybe they could make some money on the back end and sell it. I don't know. Again, there's a lot of risk in that, I think. So I'm uncertain. But nonetheless, going forward, looking at the subdivision regs and how this lays out, it appears that it's going to meet the regulation provided we grant a waiver. So, no, the waiver, obviously, would be required. And the waiver request is really for the waiver submitting the reports that were previously submitted with the prior application, such as the biological identity databases review. I think. So pesticide report. Traffic reports, that's the one. Stormwater manager report, they had one through this application. I think the runoff of additional house was on this extension. The bad person had runoff here. I don't know if you have any questions for the applicant or for myself.
Yeah, I had a, I had one. I'm sorry. Brian, did you have a question?
No, I didn't hear.
I'm sorry. So I might, I just was curious from this. Is the proposal from both of these that they're planning on selling both of these lots or keeping them, renting them out? Or not really clear yet?
We'll have a better idea once we start developing kind of where we are financially and everything like that. But we are really, we know at the very least we will develop them and there will be two houses there.
Yeah. Are these the, like, I just know they're very similar. So is this the plan right now? Is that this two that's on here? Or is that just like, I don't know if that's what the plan is right now? That this is what they're going to, you guys are planning on building?
The plan is pretty accurate. The houses will be very identical.
Okay.
So you are correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any other, anything else you want to add?
If there is no public comment respectfully, could we potentially vote and close this matter today? We are trying to build as soon as possible so that way we can re-landscape the environment and kind of minimize any sort of like climate or, you know, environmental damages and kind of prevent any sort of erosion or anything like that.
Okay, thanks. My question, I guess maybe Gary can answer it. We got, we have all the reports and we got the Leged Light Health District report. And they mentioned something. They said, as you mentioned, it was suitable. But there was a question about, I guess, the, let me see. Let's see. Soil explorations required prior to submission of individual lot plans. Can that just be part of the conditions on approval or something?
Yes, you would add that as a condition.
Condition, you do that.
Again, they're going to be required to do that regardless to be helpful, to get a little bit. Certainly, you can add it in if the initial approval that they satisfy all of those kinds of factors that are required to be purchased and contained.
So there are no other reports, really? All the reports were on the original application, right?
All our staff reviews were favorable to zoning requirements. Single lot. Fire marshal had a particular comment.
Okay.
They're all here if we want to.
Okay.
No issue. So town engineer review, again, as I said, there'll be a right-of-way permit, driveway entrance. So I think based on what's been submitted, I think the record is complete. That said, I think we can close the public hearing. Required to be voting. You are to take a vote. I recommend that you vote on the waiver request first and then on the subdivision.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone want to submit a, entertain a motion to close the public hearing unless?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. A second?
I don't want to close the public hearing without public comment.
Okay. I don't know where's that. Oh, was there any other public comments?
Ah, thank you. They have to do the three requests.
They want to do that three times.
Yeah.
Okay. Any public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to close the public hearing in a second.
A second?
Yeah, I think Tim's second.
Thanks. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
The public hearing is closing.
Thank you. So can we, we can have further discussion on the waiver request and the subdivision application? Were there any other questions or concerns?
No, no.
No, really? So I guess we can, did I, how do people feel comfortable moving at this point? Or do you want more time to review or?
Good. Good.
Good, okay. Okay. I think we need two motions. One to, the first motion would be to request a waiver from Section 423AJ of the Eastline subdivision regulations. Then that was part of the original, it was submitted on the original application. Does anyone want to submit a motion? To request a waiver from this?
I'll move to approve the request for a waiver from Section 4-2-3A through J of the Eastline subdivision regulations on the property located at Scott Road.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Can we add to that? Am I allowed to?
Yeah, I was going to ask for any more.
I'd like to add that the motion to approve the waiver is based on the previously approved application on this property in September 2023. Just.
Okay, so.
You have to restate the motion.
Want to amend that?
Okay. I'll restate my motion to, oh, thank you. I will, I'll restate my motion to approve the request for a waiver from Section 4-2-3A through J of the Eastline subdivision regulations on the property located at 123 Scott Road based on previously approved application on this property of based on previously approved application on this property of September 2023.
Thank you. Do you hear a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Anonymous, okay, thank you. So now we have, now we're gonna, I guess we can discuss the actual application for the resubdivision. Was there any, for the two lot resubdivision of 1.931 acres of land? Was there any further discussion?
I had one quick question, which was just, I wasn't sure, is the rain garden something that we required, or is that just part of the application?
We actually prefer our stormwater regulations to require an install.
Okay, I was kind of involved that, but I wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Difficulty now is the maintenance of it, because we don't actually have any rain resists. So we get a bit smaller. Once we issue the CO, homeowner moves in, they usually maintain them, but we lack the.
Yeah, so there's no like, fine system or anything like that, or inspection of something?
Not in regards to the subdivision rights. We can require bonding for things like public improvements, these aren't the subdivision rights. Public improvements, they're no impact development structures, designs that help mitigate water quality. Not so much.
Yeah.
Typically taking the roof off. First of clean, etc., some atmospheric deposition.
I did see, is this part of the, the previous, I didn't notice it to this, the previous application, or is that included in here of the removal of the stone wall? Is that like, I don't know if that's already been done, or if that's just going to be contingent on this subdivision?
That's the removal of the stone wall to access the property. Otherwise, you're not going to, if you leave the stone wall, it's part of the property. It's just a portion.
Okay.
Particularly the stone walls, all probably not, or shared, like, to my donors.
Okay. Any other discussion, any other questions?
If you just have the one condition that you were looking at.
Right, I was gonna mention, yeah.
I don't have any other comments myself. Typically, I draft a report, but I don't have to do so. Primarily thought of the State Preservation Grant for Smith House. That has been completed, the archaeological study has been delivered to town, also the State Preservation Office, so my apologies if I'm assuming.
How do people feel about doing a motion now? If we wait till we do a motion next meeting, it's still within the timeframe.
Yeah, you have six days to make your decision.
Right, right.
Like I said, it's one lot, I think it's straightforward. And the only condition, the ice, ledge light, which are going to have to be, whether you condition it.
I would prefer not to make these, these guys wait. I mean, like I said, it's a subdivision from one to two, and we've already approved the waiver of this. It seems, it seems pretty clear cut.
I agree with that.
Okay, any further discussion, any other comments? Okay, I can, I can entertain a motion regarding the subdivision, resubdivision application of Andia and Palom Leclore, resubdivision. If anyone wants to submit a motion, I guess, you know, they have the, I guess, the Ledge Light.
Yeah, it would just be a motion to approve the application, the condition of this asset, Ledge Light, of the district apartments.
Anyone want, I can entertain a motion, or I can submit a motion? Oh, you go ahead.
A motion to approve the two lot resubdivision of the 1.931 acres of land zoned RU40, with the stipulation that the applicant buys by the Ledge Light. What was it?
I guess the.
Ledge Light.
Satisfy all the requirements.
Satisfy all the requirements.
Requirements in the Ledge Light report, I think.
Of the Ledge Light.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear, I'm sorry. Do I hear a second? Thank you. Any other discussion? Sorry? Any other discussion, any comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Say hi.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? No. Thank you. It was approved unanimously, so. Okay, next on the agenda are zoning referrals. I don't think we have any, Gary? Okay, thanks. Municipal referrals, I guess we don't have any, no. And now we have old business, the subdivision regulations under, we discussed the last meeting, Section 4, the application submission procedures on.
The archaeological report, and the, whether to modify the regulation for the Conservation and Natural Resources Commission requirements.
So I'm sad to say that I don't have enough to refer to for you. I got a little side track again with that grant. That being said, I am working with town attorney. So hopefully, it will be called in next month, and hopefully in September. That said, I think the parcel of land that I was maybe of some concern, probably is a few years out before it's even, I don't know, but there's. Generally, we have a building RU40, so I think generally, I don't have a lot out there. I don't have much of a rush to do this, but certainly you need to do this. Justify the lack of reporting from you, right? I'll look forward to you next month.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I had, I'm sorry, I know everyone's here, but I had one quick question, because we had talked about it something, and then the, our ex officio had a report on this. I had thought that when the proposal had been here, and we had the talk, discussion about East Patagonia, that the proposal had been to, not to install a bike lane per se, but to have the area designated possibly for both bikes and cars. Am I, is that correct, or is that just like, I wasn't sure if I misunderstood him, and that just, that was determined like, non-viable or something?
It's not viable with bike lane.
Yeah.
The installation of it. You may be able to get the Chevron, and the shared print mark on it. Sure, I'll talk to Alex, the town engineer.
Okay.
But the sidewalk itself has been, has been aborted, so we do have that forward. So at least the sidewalk, definitively.
Okay.
Question was asked, and there's no way, no space, so it was explored, man.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we can get the shared bike lane type thing, it's just a marking on the road.
Well, that's more, I understand, it's a very tight road. I'm honestly impressed we're able to get the walk, the sidewalk in there. I just more meant about the Chevron, but it seems that that's maybe down the road.
Maybe down the road. I'll see what I can do to, I would like to see if we can get that, the designations on certain bike routes, and I think as it pertains to what the Southeast Kentucky Council Governments are going to do, is they, I think they want to put that all the way along 156, as far as it can go, because there are so many limitations to build with. There's a bridge, that sidewalk is just more of a line.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, any other questions? New business, I don't think we have any, so I think.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
I have to make a motion to adjourn, and.
Steve, a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No, I'm not opposed. I forgot to put my hand up. So I was unanimous. Any abstentions? No. Okay. We can adjourn. Thank you. Thank you.